I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next thing is the public hearing on the acceptance of gifts. We're going to open the public hearing at 4:34. If anyone has any public comment about the gifts that we're receiving, all of them being from a very generous PTO, then you're welcome to speak on it.
And $5,000 from a governed Subaru.
Oh, sorry.
Where 10 teachers will each receive $500 to purchase classroom resources for students and then $13,000 from the PTO to be used. $10,000 across grades pre-K to 8, $1,000 for SMS health, $1,000 for SES music, and $1,000 for grades at the psychology school.
So we will leave that open, correct? Where are my comments on that?
So yeah, see if we have any comments on that and then you can close the public hearing if there are none and then you'll accept them later in the meeting.
So if anyone has anything specifically about those, you're welcome to say it now. If not, we'll close the public hearing at 4:35 and then we move on to public comment. Just a reminder to make sure that everyone has time to speak. Everyone has three minutes to share whatever you would like to share. The board will not be responding back because in our policy, we just let you speak and share.
I'm going to ask another question.
And if you have any follow-up, you could absolutely reach out after the fact if you'd like to do that. So we're going to open public comment at 4:36. So anyone that would like to speak can refer to step forward. You go right ahead.
Cassandra Hasham. So I just wanted to come up and speak a little bit about conversations I've heard in the community and comments I've seen on social media. So I wrote something. But education is not exclusive to our schools. Education's in our homes, in our community, and it surrounds us. Humans are learning and evolving daily. It can be simple things like how to plant tomatoes or how to change a tire. However, there's more complex issues as well, knowledge that can lead to reform and policy change, knowledge that will help us adapt as a community to the world around us as it's changing. Life is not stagnant and the way that we address our education system is not either. I've heard a lot in town and on social media over the past few months, problems with our school, problems with our classes, problems with our kids. But what I haven't heard from these same voices is interest in working on a solution and looking deeper into the root of the concerns. There's been a lot of blame presented as struggling students and soft parents on social media and it's been corroborated by opinions which hold a lot more weight than your average person, which as a parent of a struggling special education student, I have a hard time hearing. We as adults set the forum for these children. If we allow our emotions to agree on social media about the bad kids that we're teaching, the future of our children, that there's problems instead of change. Not every child is born into this world with the same opportunities, but no child is born into this world wanting to be disruptive. These behaviors stem from something, whether it's a genetic disorder, mental health diagnosis, trauma-based, or a struggling home. There's always more than meets the eye. So I'm asking you as a board, please look at our students as a whole. Review your own goals as a school board, which are pursuit of academic excellence for all students, a positive and supportive social culture, and promoting positive community connections. Review our special education programming, our behavioral programming, and instead of blame, see what we can do to make positive changes as a community. How can we offer more support? What services can we bring to this community and this school that will help mitigate some of these problems? In my previous experience working in Massachusetts, there are roles for people to help with things like this. New Hampshire struggles in this area. So why not work together and see how we can bring some of these positions like family partners and support workers into our community to help some of these struggling families and these kids change? Every family and every kid wants to succeed and it's our job to accept them and work with them and create an environment that supports all of the children in our school.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, Lacy Fowler. I completely agree. I loved her speech. I'm not that as prepared as she is. My concerns here, and I did not get the chance to look at your agenda, so this could be completely off-topic, but I also agree that there are problems and we as a community, which that's why I'm here, need to help because we can't just yell at the school board. We can't just yell at administration. But at the same time, there's two things that I'm very frustrated with. One, that I've reached out to a school board member was our health class curriculum, which I received and I'm going to actually have to have my son opt out because I don't feel that the curriculum is appropriate. There's things in there that were part of the curriculum that talk about sexual orientation, which is fine, sexual things. Teaching these kids things that are completely inappropriate for a 12-year-old or an 11-year-old to know. So that's one of my main concerns is the health classroom and the curriculum for that. My other concern is that we spend so much time talking about these kids and I know there's been big issues in the fifth grade for behavioral, which, you know, these kids' behaviors are holding other kids back and which I agree, it's in every single grade. But I looked at where we are. I just got my kid's NEWA testing back and so I did some researching because my son, my daughter did phenomenal, which I'm thankful for, but my son went down and I expected him to for the summer. But I started digging and I just want to read this really quick and I know you guys don't respond unless I have a question, but so for SAU 21, Southampton, math, they have a 72%. Northampton, math, 64%. Hampton Falls, math, 65%. Seabrook Middle School, 16%. Reading, Southampton, 66%. Northampton, 70%. Seabrook Middle School, 34%. Hampton Falls, 78%. Now, when I looked at my son, who was a seventh grader in Seabrook Middle School, their target area for reading and math was about 50 to 55%. We are so far behind. So my question or my proposal or I don't know. What are we doing about this? Because every time I hear about the school, it's about mental health and behavioral health and everything, but what are we doing about actual academics? Because 16% in math and all the other schools are triple or double that. It's just even, so I pulled Hampton as well. They're not in our SAU, but they were at one point. Even Hampton, 65% in math, 71% in reading. So I just want to throw some numbers out there so that everybody can see just how far behind we are academically. So we can talk about community and behavioral and health and mental illness and everything that has been brought up lately, but academically, this is just, it's embarrassing. So I think we as a community, as a school board, as teachers, as academics, we really need to kick it up a notch because 16% in math is ridiculous. So thank you for giving me some time and take care.
Please.
Kathy Aham. Kathy Aham. Pretty much I'm going to touch on everything that Lacy just touched on and everything you did under there. My concerns have been proficiency levels for 30 years because I've had work in the school system. So I know that we met at the end of last year because I was so angry when I saw work that my sixth grader did during the last year that I couldn't even say a fourth grader. It was embarrassing. And my child isn't special needs. It should have been better work. And it was simple, simple, simple sentence structure that wasn't even corrected in sixth grade. And that to me, it was a problem. I was so angry. I think I wrote and I forwarded it to the school board. And we met and I honestly don't know the answer, but I can tell you that these numbers, you guys all have young kids. I have old kids. This hasn't changed. This hasn't changed at all since my 28-year-old started here. I started her at Sacred High because I was a young mother who moved to this town from a middle-class Massachusetts town and I saw the school, I loved it. I'm like, okay, mom, I love her. I couldn't move. That wasn't feasible. You moved here. I couldn't put my child in this school. It was horrible. It was embarrassing. And I was lucky enough to be able to afford private school. And she did private school until third grade. She came here in third grade and she was dumbed down. She was dumbed down. She was bored as hell in fourth grade. She had already learned everything in fourth grade that she already had to spend a whole year listening to. So something's wrong. Something's wrong that hasn't been wrong. It hasn't changed. So that's my concern. You can look at those numbers, Lacy. They go all the way back, okay? They're 16 now. They've never been above 38, ever, in 30 years. So you guys are just learning right now that your school has been, it's not new to me because I researched it when I came here. And unfortunately, I can't afford Sacred High anymore. I don't think any of us, that's not an option. We have to go to this school. So you have to do something about it. It's not fair to these kids. They're not getting the education they're entitled to by law at all. They're not prepared. They go to Winnicott, guess what happens? They're lost. They're lost at Winnicott because they're in fourth grade, fifth grade level going into ninth grade. That's what it's looking like. So what happens? They go to night school. They drop out. They get their GED. They go to the adult education. I mean, I see that Winnicott has improved, but I can remember a time when Winnicott was ready to lose their accreditation too. So something has to change. We're not preparing our kids for the world at all. It's disappointing. I can tell you that when remote learning started, my child was in fourth grade and had a teacher from a different school district. The very first assignment was for her to write an essay on herself. Simple, right? Except nobody from the Seabrook School District in her classroom knew what an essay was, much less form an essay. They didn't know what an essay was, okay? When I learned that, my child didn't know what an essay was in fourth grade. I was writing reports in fourth grade. I was presenting reports in fourth grade. So something's wrong. And it isn't due to COVID. You can't blame COVID. This isn't new. This just happened since COVID. You can look back on an education website. This goes back to 2004. I've seen it much later than that. So it's up to you guys. Figure it out because our kids are failing and we're failing that. You guys are failing that.
Thank you.
Hello? Harold Eaton, 157 Farm Lane. I came to a meeting that was here before about fifth grade behavioral issues. During that time, there was something that was brought up. I had brought up the concern that a parent had with the school and asked if there could be any way to schedule a meeting with the parents, that they could have open dialogue and meet one-on-one. When this was brought up, people got upset. They got upset because they don't want to hear what the people have to say. So the conversation stopped. But then a board member had said and made a comment that struck me rather strange. The board member said, "I need to get the approval from the superintendent before I can set an agenda." So I'm here to remind you today, school board members, that you have the authority. Under RSA 194(c), it reads that the responsibility of hiring the superintendent is the SAU board collectively by individual school boards and committee that are formed for each district. The school board is a policymaking board and its policies are local law of the district. Roles of the school board. Set and establish school board policy. That's all policy. Doesn't matter if you created a policy. Somebody can make a motion. You can second it. You can get the majority. You can change that policy. Establish the school budget and provide budget oversight. Hire a superintendent. Although this is an SAU decision, you are still involved in the decision-making. Evaluate the superintendent. When's the last time we've done that? Conduct hearings and serve as adjudicative body to various issues. Roles and responsibilities. General, school board. You govern. That's your job. You govern based on what these people here today tell you. Superintendent advises the board. It's not the other way around. Make no mistake. Policy. You adopt. You create. You make. Superintendent suggests. Board meetings. School board, you're in charge. Superintendent serves. Budget. School board adopts and monitors. Superintendent prepares. Curriculum. You establish it. So if these parents are here today and they're upset with what's being taught, that's on you. Superintendent recommends. So you see, the school board has the control, not the superintendent. The residents of this town put their confidence in you to have their best interests and also to protect their children. So I come before you and ask, please focus solely on the child's education and change the curriculum in health class so that these children in Seabrook learn the same material as the other children in the SAU schools. Let's teach these children in Seabrook things like how to take care of their bodies, proper nutrition, and exercise. After all, this is what the other SAU schools are teaching their children. We don't need to subject these children to sexually explicit materials at school. If that's the case, leave it to the parents. Change the curriculum. If these parents choose to, let them choose to say it. We don't need to subject them to all this other stuff. Children come to school to learn. That's the main objective. They don't need the proper things on what's proper and accepted terms shoved down their throat. Think of how confused they must be. The children don't ask for any of this. Please keep this out of the school and protect these children in Seabrook. Let's go back to growing these children's minds with math, science, language arts, and history. After all, every single one of us in this room was taught in this way and look at where we're at today. Let's give these children the same opportunity that we all had. I'm not going to get into the proficiency scores because those have already been read. So there's no sense in going to run it. But this should be the school administration board and teachers' main concern, proficiency levels. That shows that we're failing. When I say we, I mean you, the administrators, the SAU, everybody. You're failing. Sorry, that's a failing grade. Although mental health is important and crucial, we cannot pretend that the scores from Seabrook are due to mental health problems. But for some reason, it seems as though this is the main focus. We've switched the focus now and we're concentrating more on mental health rather than trying to take care of the issue at hand. I know this because I attended an SAU event and that's what it was based on, mental health. Not getting these grades up, not giving these children what they need, mental health. I would suggest that the school board acknowledges the main problem, that you have a joint board meeting with other school boards, Northampton, Southampton, Hampton Falls, that you adopt the same curriculum as the other SAU schools. Clearly, the Seabrook curriculum isn't working. We need to have these children from Seabrook learning the same material as the other children from the other SAU schools. You say that you're big into equality, but from where I'm standing, it looks like, once again, the Seabrook students are being treated differently. All the children are going to end up attending Winnicott High School. These children from different towns are all going to be in the same classes together. The difference is the students from Seabrook are not receiving the same opportunity. They're not receiving the same education. It's not their fault. They're not receiving it. It's not in their curriculum.
Harold, I don't want to cut you off.
So they're receiving the same opportunity as surrounding towns.
Harold.
We are setting our children up for failure. The question is why? I am not a school board member. I can see the facts right in my face. Please stand up for these children and do what's right. You are their voice. Teach the exact same curriculum as the surrounding towns. So when Seabrook students get to Winnicott, they have received the same opportunity to succeed. Please do the right thing and stand up for the children. Thank you for your consideration, Harold Eaton.
I think if anyone else, if they doesn't want to speak, they can actually allot their time to him if he has more to say.
Well, he did already go over by at least two. I was trying to allow him extra time to speak, so. But if that's what you would like to do, then you are welcome to do that. If anyone else would like to speak, you are welcome to come up to the podium.
Hi, Jenna Downe, 75 Clings, Seabrook. So I just want to say today, my son, fifth grade, started his new curriculum and he enjoyed it, having his classes, all classes, all day long. Second off, I want to touch on base with Harold as far as these children going to Winnicott. Already, we see that Seabrook is choice out from Hampton and Hampton Falls and Northampton children and we see it in the sports. So this week, my son, this past weekend, was supposed to play his game in Seabrook, but the coach, being from Hampton, after Seabrook spent the money all week long to have the field ready for these children, didn't want to play in Seabrook. Oh, God, no, we can't make these kids play in Seabrook. So no, they didn't. They played at Winnicott. So yeah, they are being voiced out as Seabrook children and that's going to continue if we don't do something. My child, fifth grade, he can't write. He can write, but he can't read what he writes. He's never been taught to write because we're always on a Chromebook. He can't spell because the Chromebook's going to correct what he does wrong. He needs help in reading. He don't get that. You know, these children are going to grow up, have jobs, and they need to learn how to sign their check, okay? They can't do that. I work with a girl that's got a college education and still can't sign her check. She does not know how to sign her name. We need to help these children. It has gone back here, like she said. It's not something new. And the behaviors, yes, we have a lot of behavior problems, a lot of behavior problems and we need to learn how to separate these children so that other children can learn, but yet they can still get their education. We need to change this for our children. It's the future coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there one? Would anyone else like to speak?
So I think that we should start this meeting off by possibly changing the policy for public speakers because clearly they're coming here and they're being limited. And I'm looking at RSA 91-a2 that states that nothing in this section shall restrict school boards from establishing other reasonable standards for the public comment period provided such standards are opposed equally for all speakers. So there's really nothing here that says that it has to be limited to three minutes. So I don't know if this is something that we have to make a motion on to change because I'm finding that they don't come here often to discuss things and when they do, when it becomes a hot topic, we're more looking at the clock on how long they have to speak versus listening to what they're saying. So I make a motion that the Seabrook School Board changes the policy limiting them to three minutes to giving them unlimited time as long as they're all given equal time.
Can you repeat that slow, slow?
That I make a motion that the school board changes the policy that...
Hold on. The word changes the policy.
Yep. That public speakers are only allowed to speak three minutes.
Are older?
Change it that they're not, that we're basically changing it that they can speak as long as they feel is required versus three minutes as long as everybody has equal opportunity to speak because that's what it states here in the RSA.
Motion that the school board changes the policy that the public speakers can speak as long as they feel...
Is necessary.
Yeah.
Versus three minutes in the past policy as long as all board members, all public speakers have the same opportunity to speak.
I'll second for a discussion purpose. So unlimited is unreasonable. I can go ahead and probably, because if somebody has unlimited time to speak, like we have agendas and stuff to get to. I do think potentially lengthening the time and allotting the fact that if there are people in the crowd that would like to sign their time over for someone else to speak, this is very commonplace in a lot of different board rooms and board meetings. Unlimited, someone could literally stand up here and go on and basically filibuster our meetings to death.
I know what happened at the town hall yesterday and people spoke for a long time and they got their point across. And I think this is no different.
I still think we have to, again, if there are people here that want to give up their time so other people can speak to get their point across, the purpose of public, like we should be coming in to have, having prepared statements to get your point across. And I have no problem giving anybody extra time. I would make the change in the motion to allow up to five minutes per speaker with the opportunity to borrow time from additional speakers. If people come and there's somebody here and they're making their points and there's someone in the crowd that would, already knows that they're making their point for them, that's equal representation right there. They can say, "I will give my additional five minutes to XYZ." Unlimited time, again, we will never, ever, ever get through a meeting if somebody wants to stand up here and their public comment is reading the encyclopedia, which is what we 100% open the door for if we're saying unlimited.
We're here once a month. We're here to serve them. If it takes them 10 minutes to explain.
But we're not here to filibuster. Again, this is opening the door for somebody who doesn't agree with what's on the agenda to sit up here and literally, because if you're not limiting the public comment, someone here up there and be like, "This is a book I found in the school. I'm going to read the whole entire book and it takes up the whole time." Like, we have to have, so I'm in agreement that I think we should have a little bit more time. I say five minutes per speaker with the ability to borrow time from additional speakers. I think that will get everyone's point across in a very respectful way, plus make the point. I would, at some point, like to have something where we can actually have questions and answers go back and that's something that we could probably set at an additional time. But as far as this motion per the public comment, I would amend the emotion, recommend amending the motion to make a five-minute max with the ability to borrow time from people within the crowd.
I would second that motion.
So the original proposal, the motion, we'd have to accept that as a second, but I just had a point of order for you when you're ready, which is just that you have an existing policy on policy development that requires at least three days of written notice prior to change of policies, although it says on matters of unusual or unexpected urgency, the board may waive the second meeting limitation and take immediate action to adopt a new policy or revise an existing policy. So you would have to make a motion to suspend the policy process in order to change the policy today.
So according to your policies. Okay, so for this meeting, if no one else is wanting to speak at this very moment, we could potentially make a motion to give the time to then affirm it at the next meeting, starting that meeting?
You can always waive a policy, like suspend a policy for the duration of a meeting should you choose to, you know, provide additional time. That's always an option before the board. Boards often extend their public comment period. If you wish to change your written policy, you either have to vote to suspend your policies and take this on as a matter of urgency, or you need to table it to a subsequent meeting.
So my recommendation would be we suspend the policy, vote on a new one right here in front of the people that came to extend the public comment, and then it becomes our new policy.
Does anyone say yes?
I agree with the five minutes. I think it's a reasonable amount of time and then to be...
So, I make a motion that we suspend policy...
So you already have... You have to vote on Kelly's motion first. So you either have to second that or... Because I don't have it going to be...
Can she pull her, can you pull your motion? And then I make the new motion with the new time.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with telling a taxpayer that they have five minutes to speak if it wants to take them six minutes.
I'm not comfortable giving somebody... Again, you can't have an unlimited timeframe for somebody... It's, it's not conducive to getting everyone to speak. And again, if we want to give people the time to speak, they can allot the time. I'm not opposed to giving people...
Right, I'll say 10 minutes. Five minutes is not, is not even close to getting out what they want to say. If we meet once a month and these issues have been... I mean, we had a selectance meeting yesterday where everyone spoke more than five minutes. And they weren't there all day and they were able to resolve some issues. We're here once a month. These people, I mean, they don't come every month.
I know they don't come every month.
If they come for...
Give them the courtesy to at least discuss what they have to say. Maybe they're going to get up there and they have a couple of things to talk about. It may not be one topic. They may have two children that they want to discuss both, both subjects with. It's going to take more than five minutes. So they have to pick and choose which one they feel is more important because they're looking at the clock. I just, I just feel like that we're here to serve them. And for the last, I've been on the board four years. In the four, last four years, we've actually limited them on how much say they have over a place that they should be able to say what they want when they want to say.
Having an unlimited time span is...
Vote on it if you want to. You know how I feel.
Is not going to, again, I want people to be able to speak. But at the end of the day, we have to come to a meeting. We have to get agendas established and gone through. And I appreciate every single person that's come up. We, everyone has pretty much gotten through their public comment and we can allot them more time. We can give them...
And I did, to be fair, I did allow more than seven minutes. I did, because at that point, we were already double the amount of time.
But to give people a chance to literally, again, you're opening the door for someone that doesn't like what's on the agenda to go up there and literally read from a book. This is stuff that already happens in government when you give people all the time. Like, it's not going to help the problem. Five minutes on an issue, on a prepared statement, most people are coming in to the school board meeting with a specific thing in mind based off of the agenda or based off of what happened in that month. Five minutes is a good time to prepare a statement.
Don't second mine. You can make your proposal. There's no big deal. You don't have to second mine. No one's seconding mine will bring the next proposal up and you can vote on it, it's okay. I don't have to agree with you and you don't have to agree with me.
So are we voting on this proposal?
So Kelly's needs a second. Are you...
Mine doesn't. Mine will if it doesn't.
Is there a second to Kelly's motion?
Yeah. I don't know anyone.
No, there isn't.
I'll second it.
Who? Jen?
I will.
So all in favor?
I'm going to take a roll call vote, just so I can have...
Yep.
Okay?
That's fine.
Christina Kaiser?
No.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
Michelle Perkins?
No.
Patrick, Patrick Knott?
No.
The resolution has failed.
I make a motion...
Hold on. Please. Motion?
I make a motion that we extend public comment to five minutes per speaker with the ability of any speaker...
Hold on. With the ability of any speaker...
To borrow time...
To borrow time.
From other members present at the school board meeting.
Present at the school board meeting.
In five-minute increments.
In five-minute increments. Motion to extend public comment to five minutes per speaker with the ability of any speaker to borrow time from other members present at the school board meeting in five-minute increments.
I'll second.
Hold on. So, Patrick, Christina? Is that Christina?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Again, I would just raise the point of order that if, if you're looking to do this as a permanent change to your policy, that you will need to vote to suspend your policies and consider this a matter of unusual or unexpected urgency and waive your second meeting requirement.
Okay. So do you want me to take this one off and do that first? You guys need to tell me what you want to do.
Or is there a way to allow, is there a way to make it, I don't want to say tentative, but...
You can do it just for today's meeting and then go back to the policy and change it.
Correct.
Yeah. So just do it for today's meeting and then come back to it.
So is this just, do you want to write just for today? Do you want to note that?
Yes, just for tonight's meeting.
No.
Right?
That's back to Patrick.
That is, that's okay.
Does that make everything easier? And then we push it forward in the formal policy change?
So you would have to go through your policy process, which is to have a second read of your policy at a next...
I want to get this one just done and over. So I will rescind my motion.
Can I just cut it out?
Just, just hold it, just, just hold it, just...
I'm going to cut it out.
Hold that there for a second. I'm going to make a motion that we suspend...
Wait, wait, so you're, listen, there's a process I have to follow. I can't add another motion till I figure out what I'm doing with this?
So Patrick is withdrawing his motion.
So do I have to do, I can just delete it?
So you can just note...
Withdraw.
Patrick withdraws his motion.
Okay, hold on. Patrick withdraws. Motion. And then just save it?
Yep, that's fine. And now, sounds like someone wants to make a motion about suspending...
I make a motion that we suspend policy...
B-G-A-A.
B-G-A-A.
Okay. B-G-A-A.
Yes.
And that's, again, just for this meeting? Okay. And we still have to follow a second read?
No, that, this is so we can put in this policy right now. We're suspending this policy because of unusual circumstances so we can vote on a new motion on a new policy.
Do you want me to write that because of, or just put...
Yes.
Because of unusual circumstances? What's the last part, Patrick?
You can just leave it at that, because of unusual circumstances.
Okay.
So I'll second that.
We'll take another roll call vote. Christina Kaiser?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Is this for suspending?
Yes.
Yes.
Michelle Perkins?
Yes.
Patrick Knott?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
All right. Now, I make a motion to extend public comment to five minutes per speaker.
I'm going to, I'm going to copy.
Yeah.
Left.
You already have it prepared here now.
Hold on. Motion to extend public comment to five minutes per speaker with the ability of any speaker to borrow time from other members present at the school board meeting in five-minute increments.
Yes.
Do we need anything else, Meredith?
I just have to see where that's going in your existing policy. Because your existing policy on public comment is much linkier. So I just want to make sure we're putting it in the right section. So, item number four says individual speakers will be allotted three minutes per person and each speaker will be permitted equal time. Speakers may not relinquish a lot of time to another speaker. So it looks like it's just that bullet number four that we'll need to change. So you're saying individual speakers will be allotted five minutes per person? Are you keeping and each speaker will be permitted equal time?
No, because I believe that that takes care of it because if each speaker wants to give their time over, they're giving up their time, which to me is equal time.
So, so speakers may relinquish a lot of time to another speaker.
Do you want to put a, I mean, at some point, I feel like there has to be like a total, you know? Some are just leaving.
That's what I really, if there's enough speakers here and they all get their time and someone to speak, it's fair and equal across.
The last part of that bullet is the board may, at the outset of the public comment period, increase or decrease the individual time limit for all speakers, but may not decrease the aggregate time below 30 minutes. So in other words, you already have the flexibility to do what you're changing your policy to say.
And I will second.
So do I, I don't need to add anything else, Meredith? The motion, as I read it, it's fine?
Yes, because it will be to change bullet four of policy BEDH. Yes, that should be noted.
How, do you want me to just put bullet four? Do you want to put this little, bullet four will need to be amended?
To amend bullet four of policy BEDH to read...
For of policy, the what?
E-D-H.
E-D-H? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Patrick and then Christina is second. And then I'll do another roll call vote. Christina Kaiser?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
No.
Michelle Perkins?
Yes.
Patrick Knott?
Yes.
Motion has passed.
Okay. So, if there are no other public comments that have not spoken yet, we will close public comment at 5:15. We'll move on to number four correspondence. Just in there as a request. There's no action. Approval of minutes for the September 12th meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for the September meeting.
I'll second.
On paper, you abstain.
No.
Even though you technically were here.
All right, hold on one second. So Christina, Patrick...
Kelly, Jen.
Were all a yes?
Yeah. Were you a yes too? Yeah. And then Michelle abstains because she wasn't... Motion has passed. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah.
I did too. I can't get in.
Blew up the interwebs.
No, it kicked me out.
So we're gearing up for annual parent-student events, parent conferences, open houses. And there'll be exhibitions of learning here again in November. And we are seeing all of our activities back in full swing. We are also in the early building level stages of the budget process. So while most boards won't review their budget for another month or two, our staff and administration are already preparing the 24, 25 school year. I noted that October is bullying convention month. Across the U.S., roughly one in four students report that someone has done or said something mean or cruel to them online. And roughly one in four also report that they have done or said something mean or cruel to someone else online. There are some resources linked in my report to support children who are being bullied or how to help other, or how to help children stop bullying other kids. On a legislative update, the House of Representatives currently has nearly 800 legislative service requests. So we don't know yet how many of those are related to education. But based on the most recent couple of years, we could guess probably about 200. The Senate will have its own filing period in the upcoming month. So we're, we're thinking, actually right now, that there could be upwards of 300 bills that could impact local public school districts and school board governance. New Hampshire Legislature is also working on 25 bills that were held over from the 2023 session. And the last day for report out on those retained bills is November 17. We anticipate hosting another legislative meeting with all of our boards in SAU 90 in early January. And we are still finalizing the agenda for our joint board meeting on the 18th of October, but we anticipate Portrait of a Learner Goals, the FY24 SAU Budget Proposal, and Review of Superintendent Goals as part of that agenda.
Thank you.
Looks like we're back online.
All right. Dave, potential instructions?
Yeah. It sounds like we're planning on scheduling a meeting for curriculum. I mean, there were a lot, there were a lot of comments on the curriculum. I'd love to be able to kind of crack that open and talk through it. But just, I mean, as a matter of clarification, we do have the same competencies and standards across the SAU. Same, same meetings, vertical meetings and horizontal meetings. However, curriculum does vary based on schedule, time, you know, organization of, of the classes. I just wanted out there that we do have one common curriculum across this.
But is content the same between the two? Like we're talking about specifically with the health...
Absolutely not. Every standard is the same.
So can we talk about that?
Absolutely. I think, I, maybe it's better to do it...
Yeah, we can do this, but then I do want to address that, if that's okay.
Right. And I think, I think we're all on the same page in terms of cracking that open and making sure that, that kids are getting what they need. So, with respect to my report, we did, we had the PD Day, September 29. A lot of us, actually Seabrook included, did data reviews. And it's nice because we front-loaded a lot of that professional development in the beginning of the school year, so we can really set the tone. Two big committees are going on this year. One is the PD Committee. That's the committee that determines the pathway for certification for all of our teachers across the SAU. So they've been hard at work. We've got a plan in draft form, ready to go right now for the joint board. The second big committee is going to be more of a headache, and that's the evaluation committee. That's the process by which teachers are evaluated across the SAU. So it's the same group of people. They're just going to be starting out the evaluation plan in a few weeks. But we're going, we're on schedule for that. And it came up, but the SAS data is now out. It was embargoed as of the time I wrote this report. Embargoed means like it wasn't released to the public, school reports, et cetera. However, it has at this point. So I anticipate the November board meeting cycle will have that data discussion. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Someone to speak? I had talked to Lauren DeCostin about the health curriculum. And she explained to me that, because it was brought to my attention and I did look into it, that according to Hampton Falls, that they're not being taught the same material in the health curriculum as Seabrook. So when I spoke to Lauren, she explained to me that they're all given the same scope and sequence, which I have a copy here. And I had met with her myself and my husband. We've got it to our own children. But the reason I'm discussing here on the school board That is to our own children, but the reason discussing here on the school board is because there's been other parents that have come to me about concerns. And I had brought up that it looks like the gender identity, I mean, the sexual orientation and the gender identity comes off across to parents as though it's something that is mandated or required to be taught. That is kind of what they're told by whoever they speak to when they call. They're made to believe that. They're not going to question it because that's what their understanding is. Um the state of New Hampshire profile does state that that is not required by the state of New Hampshire to be taught. So I think when they call and they're getting information that is a little misleading, they're not going to question it. So that's why when people say, well, no one's called me about this and no one's having concerns about this, it's because they're thinking they have no right to. They're thinking that it's a law, and it's not. And so when I spoke to Lauren, she explained to me, because she had spoken to you, that everybody is given um through the whole S.A.U. because yourself and health teachers and a couple other from each district meet to make the curriculum. School board members are not involved, parents not involved. But the curriculum is made up of a scope and sequence, which is basically an outline of everything that can be taught. It's not all state mandated. Some of it is national guidelines, which is nothing more, no different than recommendations. Correct?
Yeah, so um just like any other subject area, I mean, if we want to go into it, just like any other subject area, we have um what are called curriculum teams that come together across the S.A.U. In this case, with the health curriculum, it was nurses, counselors, health teachers, et cetera. We sit down and we determine what's a proper scope and sequence based on, you're right, based on state and national guidelines. The the state guidelines that we're working with with health are from two thousand and three. So they're at least twenty years old at this point. Uh so the the content experts, I I don't have a certification in health, so you know, you kind of have to listen to people. So they overlay the national on top of the state and determine kind of a proper scope and sequence for middle school health curriculum.
So basically they, so basically they look at it and decide, okay, this is state mandated. We have to put this in. This is not, this isn't necessarily state mandated mandated. Nationally, schools are teaching this, so yeah, we think this is important. Let's put this on.
Yeah, they're 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 able to have that consolidated.
Without any input from the parents or without any input from the taxpayers or school board. So they get the scope and sequence. The whole entire S.A.U. gets the same packet. And the way I was explained to is that if Hampton Falls isn't being taught something, it may possibly be due to the structure of the building. So I asked, well, what's the structure? Do you want to say something?
Uh, I think the document you're looking at, I'm not sure exactly which one. Yeah, that's the twenty twenty-two document, and that's that.
This is what I was given by the health teacher.
Yeah, that outlines like what can be taught in health. Yeah, okay.
So she said, yeah, so Lauren DeConston said that actually this this is an outline of everything that can be taught that is put together by the whole S.A.U.
Right.
It's not necessarily all state mandated. It could be national guidelines, which is basically just recommendations.
Sure.
So everybody is given this. Now she said, I said, well, how come it would be that Hampton Falls isn't taught certain topics? And she said, well, it could be that the structure of the building. I said, so what do we mean by the structure of the building? What does that mean? She said it could be according to schedule. Maybe some schools have so many blocks of health. Other schools have different blocks of health, depending on how many students they have. So that obviously concerned me because I thought as a district, we're all going by the same schedule, but all being taught the same thing. And my concern would be is if North Hampton Falls isn't being taught certain topics on here, why is Seabrook?
There is, um, there are a lot, lot of differences in our schools. For example, um Seabrook has a health teacher. North Hampton, Hampton Falls are using counselors to to deliver the health.
Or the school nurse.
Southampton's using the school nurse to deliver the health curriculum. They have, uh, the the idea of common schedules is not, that's not accurate at S.A.U. twenty-one. We all have difference, we all have different staffing.
Hold your comments.
Uh, we all have different resources. We have, all have different programs that require different class periods. Seabrook, for instance, has a, you know, A four setup and then a five to eight setup. Uh in other schools, the fifth grade is actually a self-contained elementary.
That's good to know because I asked, I think, to Colleen if when she was in her school where fifth grade started, and she admitted that she, you said it was middle school, right? A lot of us feel like middle school should be in the elementary school. That's been brought up before. We've been told that that's no different than any other middle school. I guess my, I guess my whole problem is, is that if we're a district and we're all being taught different things and the stuff that Seabrook is being taught that Hampton Falls isn't, and their test scores are all up here and ours are down here, then maybe Seabrook's, something's going wrong. Because I, I find it, if we're a district to me, anything that is being taught in Hampton Falls should be taught in Seabrook. I'm not saying that if Hampton Falls is teaching the items that I stated that are not state mandated, that we want them to teach those too. That's not my point. My point is, is that I feel like that curriculum should stick to being state mandated, and anything additional above that should be put on the parents to decide what additionally they feel their student, their their children should be learned. Because if the state doesn't feel it's required, then what, who makes that decision to do that? Good.
So I'm just noting that we've got about forty-five minutes and a lot of other agenda items. I appreciate the question. It's my understanding we're scheduling, there's a note on the board agenda to try to schedule a separate meeting to talk about the health curriculum specifically, as that was a request. But to Dave's point, you are a district. We have five of them within S.A.U. twenty-one, and they each have different budgets. They allocate different resources. They make different plans. They, in some cases, have different policies. So we're not uniform. We never have been. And that, that goes back a long time.
I I gotta say, I'm really proud of the work that we've done with the curriculum in terms of unifying the reporting standards and the reporting competencies across the S.A.U. We've, we've done that work over the last number of years, and I've tried to be as transparent as possible about it.
And that's subject one. You're not just referring to health when you say that.
Oh, that's, that's throughout the K through eight, entire S.A.U., they all are looking at the same standards.
So I'll just say this about the curriculum, you know, like clearly we have to put it on the agenda for the next meeting. We'll hammer that out so we can one hundred percent get through this meeting. We do need to look into the health thing, like there's like tons of parents saying that it's inappropriate. Like now it's been brought forward, like the ball's in your court. Let's try to change something to make things better over here. The test scores, we're going to get all to those the next meeting. One hundred percent know that that is on everyone's mind. If kids can't spell and can't write in the fourth and fifth grade, they've been here the whole time learning that. I don't want to hear that we're a poor community, that our demographics and that we're, that we're closely, that we're closely related to to Manchester. It's like, we are Seabrook. We have a multimillion dollar beach district. We all pay like the most taxes out of the S.A.U. like into the school. Let's make things work, and we have to bring, poor kids are just as capable of learning as everybody else is. Let's bring us up to the standard and let's get that done. The curriculum, we got to work on it, clearly. The report looks great. We're going to move forward with this meeting. I think we hammered this point out. Come prepare next meeting because there's going to be more people with more questions, especially if we're not getting the ball rolled.
We're going to be scheduling a separate meeting specifically for health curriculum so everyone can speak and have their time to share their concerns.
Is there ever a possibility, well, I'm not asking, but there's got to be a possible way that Seabrook School Board can make a motion where we make parents, I mean, obviously, the state mandated information is state mandated information that needs to be taught. But anything above that, I think parents need to give, they need to have some voice. Because when you're told, when you call and you're made to believe that your children are being taught stuff that is state mandated, required, parents have no say, they're not going to question that. And you know, not to get into this big, deep conversation, but as a board member for four years, for three years, I've been pretty much given the same type of terminology of guidelines and not allowed to. And we're given terminology where we don't question it because we think we automatically can't. And it's making people feel like they're hushed, but it also makes people take a step back and not fight for their children. And that's not fair. And I'm four years into this, and I'm realizing now that for the last three years, I've had a lot more right to re, to represent these people than I've been told. And I'm not going to stand back anymore. And I'm not, this isn't a show for me. This is, I'm telling you right now, Seabrook is not going to sit back and watch our kids fail anymore and be caught taught things that are not mandated. It's not fair that I'm given information to people and find out later that it's not accurate because that's what I'm being told. It's not fair. I've been made to believe they have to learn this stuff, and now I'm realizing that they don't. So I think this board needs to start putting policies into place where parents have more say and that we have more say. Because that's why we're here. We're not here just to sign the budget and payroll. So that's what I'm saying about that. Because these classes are totally different than what Hampton, uh North Hampton has. They have normal schedules. Ours has every emotional learning block under the sun in here, and they have none. They'll learn just the topic, like math, science, social studies. And what is, they don't have a flex. They don't have an I.S.A. They don't have a, what's the other thing? Win? I mean. Win. Win, no, that's an award. We'll talk about that another time.
Yeah. I know, we got to, we got to move on, but I'm, I'm, we're, I'm personally very happy to to be transparent about Common Core state standards uh for E.L.A., for math, Next Gen for science. It's all, it's pretty boring, but I'm happy to be transparent about the process. Um but it basically looks the same for each one of our disciplines. I, I think the health curriculum, that's great if we want to have that conversation. I consider that a separate conversation than just the normal curriculum adoption process. But more, more than happy to be um to be transparent.
But I also think they should be having the same amount of hours a day in math, reading, science, and social studies. And clearly they're not because there's no way that we're able to fit in that many math and English classes with all the other blocks that we have that they don't have.
That's a different, that's a district ballgame. That's a school baseball game.
That's got to change then. That's what I'm talking about.
Again, if there are concerns that the public has, if there are concerns that the board has, if there's concerns that anyone out there has, if we do not reach out and share those concerns, then things will never change. So if you do not reach out to the right people.
Christina, you don't want me to go there tonight.
I, I don't, I honestly don't. You're right.
No, you don't.
But what I'm saying is, I think that if you have, if as a parent, you have something that is a concern for your child, you should absolutely one hundred percent follow up with the person in the building. You absolutely should reach out to them first because as a school board, it's not that we don't have power. It's that our role is to make sure that the, that these individuals are doing their job. But if they're not given a chance to even do their job because they don't know about things until they come to us or until we bring them to them, then we're not giving, we have to put trust in our administrators that we are hoping that they're doing a good job. And if they're not, then that's something that we need to follow up with as well. So again, if you have concerns, please reach out to the people in the building.
I think proficiency levels tell them already what they need to know.
You are absolutely.
It's incredible now. Proficiency levels tell them. We don't have to tell them. They see the proficiency levels. They haven't changed.
You are absolutely right. We're gonna, we're gonna move on to the next item so that we can move through. We will have a curriculum meeting separate, if anyone is, everyone's welcome to, if it's going to be a public meeting, we'll figure out that date during this meeting. Um, Mary?
Good evening, everybody. You know, for my part, I would just like to say that we are all very much paying attention to gaps of achievement. Not more apparent than the gaps of achievement that occur for students with special learning needs. All children should be performing at high levels of achievement. It's on all of our minds, and we're all happy to join in that conversation when we get there. My report this evening is in the form of a presentation that I'm going to go through with just some highlights for you. The presentation is in board docs if you want more information. But I wanted to bring you some of this um info related to the McKinney-Vento Act because this has come up as something folks wanted a little more information about. And this is a regulation that helps us support students with housing insecurity. The Education of Homeless Children and Youth Program provides protection and services under the law to students that are considered either homeless or unaccompanied youth. And over one point three million children experience homelessness in our nation. The next slide is about the history. It's just an interesting perspective of a bipartisan rule that came about. It was named after two proponents of the Act. Stuart B. McKinney from Connecticut was a Republican and then also was amended by information by Bruce Vento, I believe, from Minnesota. And so that's how it's been known as McKinney-Vento Act. The next slide just tells you about McKinney-Vento versus an unaccompanied youth. A student could be either or both, but for a student to fall under both, they need to meet both qualifications, meeting the definition of homelessness, and I'll share that definition with you. Um and also, a student or a child not in the physical custody of a parent or guardian could be with a relative or in foster care. The term homeless children and youth means individuals are lacking fixed, regular, and adequate nighttime residence. They may be living doubled up due to loss of housing. They could be in motels or trailer parks or campgrounds. They could be in a space not meant for human nighttime residence, or they may be in a, in a car. So the reason why this act is so important is because it allows for educational stability. Oftentimes, individuals who are in this situation, this life situation, can be highly mobile. Children might have interruptions in their education, causing them to fall behind and further behind in schooling. So the whole reason for McKinney-Vento is to ensure that we have educational stability for, for kiddos. They have a right to a free and appropriate public education. They have a right to enroll at school immediately, even if they're lacking documents normally required for enrollment. They have a right to attend classes while the school gathers those documents. And they have a right to remain in their school of origin. And that is defined as the school that the student attended when permanently housed last. Um and that's important. And they also have a right to receive transportation to and from the school of origin. The educational services they receive need to be comparable to those provided to other students according to the student's needs. There is some dovetailing with McKinney-Vento and special education. Under McKinney-Vento, as I said, the student's allowed to stay in the school of origin or enroll in the school in the district in which they are living. It's called a best interest determination. I'll tell you a little bit more about that. But under I.D.E.A. for special education, when a student with an IEP moves into a new district, the new district alone is solely responsible for the free and appropriate education. So when a McKinney-Vento student with an IEP enrolls in a new school district, the new school district becomes responsible for the special education services, and the IEP must be followed. But liaisons from both districts will meet. Typically, the the directors of those districts meet. A liaison for McKinney-Vento will meet from each district, and they will schedule what's called a best interest determination meeting. And at that time, every situation being different, they will determine on a case-by-case basis individually what is in the best interest of that student in terms of their educational stability. There's a summary on the next page that just talks about that. I gave you a slide that shows you the New Hampshire trends that from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-one look as though New Hampshire is moving in the right direction. The state cautions us, however, that although the numbers look like in the last reporting that they have gone down, the number of students who are homeless, over three thousand, the state cautions us that they believe we're not catching all of the students who may be considered homeless or unaccompanied youth. Looking just at the unaccompanied youth number, so again, that's kids not only homeless, but they're not living with a parent or guardian for the state, two hundred and ninety-one. You can see that the vast majority, close to ninety-two percent, are living doubled up. So they do have um availability of a relative or friend or someplace else. There may not be enough beds in man dwelling for everybody who's there. Um and then you can see the percentages for those in a motel situation, a shelter, or unsheltered. I wanted to show you some information for the past few years. According to Seabrook and Winnicott, the other districts' numbers are lower than ten, so they don't meet the threshold for reporting. But you can see that there was a spike in twenty-one, twenty-two that was then reduced in twenty-two, twenty-three, excuse me. We think that that spike was around an impact of the pandemic and COVID. I can tell you that for the start of this year, our numbers are already higher than what is being reported here for, for last school year. So we have an eye on that. Every district has what's known as a McKinney-Vento district liaison. It's usually someone who's performing other responsibilities. They assist with all of the things on that next slide and making sure that the students are provided with what they need and ensuring that the best interest determination meetings are happening. I provided you with a slide showing you the McKinney-Vento liaisons for each district. And for Seabrook, Jessica Cormier, our school social worker, one of our two school social workers is the McKinney-Vento liaison for this district. She couldn't be here, but I'd like to acknowledge that Patrice Baker is here this evening. Patrice, just wave to everybody. Patrice's role is to be the intervention outreach specialist for S.A.U. twenty-one and S.A.U. ninety. She also serves as a S.A.U.-wide McKinney-Vento liaison, supporting outreach to families who have this need. Um and it's been extremely impactful, especially for this school. The related school board policies, as you probably know, are on the next page. Two of them I point out to you in particular, the education of homeless children and unaccompanied youth. And you have another policy about the education of children in foster care, which I didn't point out the numbers to you this evening, but we're also supporting students in that capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary, I have a question. The numbers that you have listed for Seabrook says fifty for twenty-two, twenty-three. Is that the numbers of um who would technically be considered homeless due to they meet one of the living situations and they also don't live with a parent?
Not necessarily, no, just the homeless situation.
So the living situation as to where you're living.
Correct, yeah.
So if they're homeless, you, does the school actually verify, so say they're in Massachusetts, do they verify if they have applied or they're receiving Massachusetts benefits?
Doesn't matter in the eyes of the law. If they were attending school here before they became homeless, then they are allowed to continue attending here regardless of where they draw their benefits.
But if they draw their benefits, then they must have had the resident.
But it's a federal law.
Qualifications in Massachusetts. Because I was told by the director of Seabrook, if they qualify for Massachusetts benefits and they've applied, then they would qualify for residency, therefore they could actually go to the res, the school where they're residing if they can qualify for the benefits.
They can, but McKinney-Vento allows you to continue attending school in your school of origin, which if, again, if you were residing in New Hampshire and then residing in Seabrook at the time when you became homeless, then you're entitled to, under federal law, to continue attending school in Seabrook. They could choose that. Like that family could choose that they wanted to keep their kid.
Even though they're getting Massachusetts benefits, Massachusetts benefits.
Yep. They could be getting New Hampshire benefits and still be homeless.
No, I understand if they're, so that's what I.
The state lines don't really matter.
Understanding is if they have New Hampshire benefits, that's one thing. But if they have enough residency to claim Massachusetts benefits, then they actually are, have residency.
Well, that doesn't mean you're not homeless.
I understand that.
And that, again, entitles you to McKinney-Vento under federal law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The SES board.
So Brian's report is included. I'm not going to read through all of it for you. He's out today, but his report is in it.
Do you have any questions about it?
Good call, passing on.
No, it's fine. Okay.
Colleen.
Welcome.
Yeah, so my intent was to welcome Colleen Lennon, who is on, I think today is like day nine. Day nine of stepping into the role of interim principal here in Seabrook. Colleen has hit the ground running and
Literally.
And I'm delighted she's here. Colleen comes to us with 17 years of experience as a middle school, in middle schools, but as a principal, and a prior 10 years teaching middle school specifically. So she is well-versed in all things middle school and was given to me in Seabrook. Very quickly.
Appreciate the opportunity. I really love to hear what you guys can say. Thanks for saying the fifth grade parents will work on that. And I just want to echo what's been said by others. The only way that we can help you, Mike and I and everybody else who are unstable, is if you let us know. So if you don't know, we can't help you. I have an email now, feel free.
And I just got to say that the meeting we had with the fifth grade parents, I thought went awesome to have a back-and-forth dialogue between parents and the new principal. To all the people out there, I was highly impressed with how the meeting went. She really seems to have our concerns of our low test scores and disciplinary issues like at hand and like at the forefront and is ready to go in and start battling against that. She already came in and made a change directly to that fifth grade school block because we were so far off from what everybody else was doing. Day nine, already making changes. I look forward to seeing what you have for the rest of the year to help us start pushing to get back on track. If you can't get ahold of a teacher, she's already said, send her an email saying second request. We're going to get the conversations going back and forth. She sounds like she is 100% ready to get the ground, put some discipline back in the school, hold teachers, students, administration accountable, and we, I can't ask for more than that. So send your problems to her. I promise you, they'll start to be addressed. Start to be addressed. Well, and again, welcome awards, so.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Colleen.
Just one more thing under the middle school principal's report, just to note that we had a donation of $120 from the Blackbaugh Giving Fund that will go to student activities, so thank you to them.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt.
Thank you. So I've included three reports on board docs this month. Our usual monthly expenditure and revenue reports, year-to-date, but I've also included the fiscal year '23 year-end summaries. So that is last year's financial results. So on the monthly report side, when we're looking at revenue, you'll see that we're starting to receive revenue. So that includes not only the appropriation via the town's appropriation, but also you'll start seeing revenue in the form of banking interest, Medicaid reimbursement, special education aid, and other, you know, other revenue such as donations that we received a good amount this evening. So that's all positive. On the expenditure side, we are tracking well. There is no significant change from last month, which is to be expected since we're only, you know, just over a month into the school year. However, if there are any, you know, any accounts that do go, you know, go over budget or we're going to see some savings with, I'll certainly update you as we move along the school year. So I want to spend a little time on last year. So as you know, we go through an audit process where Plodzik and Sanderson, our third-party auditor, comes to the SAU. They review all of our financials, all the backup, so invoices, POs, our financial policies, our financial controls, and then they produce a financial report and any control recommendations for the district. So as a result of the preliminary results, that process will go into February or March, but we have received the preliminary results. We did end the school year with an unreserved fund balance of $6,585. Those are funds that are returned to the town to offset tax assessments, and that really encompasses two sources. One is when you're looking at the budget, the operating budget, how we fund our schools. If we did not expend all those funds, then that savings goes into the unreserved fund balance. This year, as you know, we, or this last year rather, we were on a default budget, so we had a very thin margin of error. We also had some significant special education costs. So we were over budget by 300, almost $390,000 in special education. We also had some building-related issues that needed to be addressed, so we went over budget by $27,000. However, we were fortunate to have some savings in some other accounts, so $174,000 in employee benefits, $140,000 in transportation, $25,000 were saved in school administration. So there's the, there are those funds, the unexpended funds that I just addressed, then there's revenue. So every year, we report our estimated revenues to the Department of Revenue, and that's how, and they determine the tax rates that they set the town. So we estimate what we're going to receive from, you know, Medicaid, from special education aid, adequacy, banking interest, those items that we review every month on the revenue report. So should we receive more revenue than what we estimated at the beginning of the year, then that's surplus revenue, and that also goes into the unreserved fund balance. So in this case, last year, we received a large refund from the New Hampshire Retirement System of $101,000. As you know, we entered into a group net metering agreement, so we monetized our energy credits, so our electricity through a third party. We received 18, just over almost $19,000 in energy credits through that arrangement with Hydro. We also received almost $37,000 in banking interest, which was more than we expected, but as you know, rates increase pretty consistently through the year, so we did benefit there. You know, in addition to the special education costs that we incurred, we also received additional revenue through special education aid. That only accounted for $30,000, but that does eat into that large deficit that we incurred. And then we also received just over $8,000 in donations. So that represented our unreserved fund balance, but we also had some warrant articles last year. There were two on the ballot. One was the C contract. That was for our teachers' contract, which was a, what did get approved at ballot, that was $493,848. The second warrant article was the Citizens Petition Article, Child Benefit Services. That is to fund supplies and materials for Sacred Heart students who live in Seabrook. That warrant article failed at ballot. And then I just want to note that we have two established expendable trusts. One is the Special Education Expendable Trust, the other is the Building Maintenance Expendable Trust. Those are two trusts that were established to safeguard the school district in the event of unanticipated costs. So as you saw, we almost had to tap into that special education trust, and we, if I knew it was going to be so close, I probably would have right at the end. And then we also, you know, we could have a boiler go or a roof issue where we could use the Building Maintenance Expendable Trust. So we have $320,000 in the Special Education Trust and $182,000 in the Building Maintenance Trust. I will note, we will be withdrawing from that Building Maintenance Trust this year. As you know, we had the boiler replacement that unexpectedly went, actually was, it went at the end of last year, but it came into this fiscal year. Trying to make this quick, I'm sure not too many people are all that interested in these finances, but just to update you on the final few items, we did have an encumbrance carry forward of $48,985 from fiscal year '23 into fiscal year '24. So that's if we have any open contracts or work that's going to be done. That was contracted in last fiscal year, but the work is done or paid in the following, next fiscal year. So that just crosses, that's a timing issue as far as crossing fiscal years. And then we had a school nutrition surplus of just over $300,000. So one recommendation that Plodzik and Sanderson did provide us with was to keep the fund balance, that I just mentioned for the food service, below three months' worth of average expenditures. So we did, last year, we did create a spending, spend-down plan, and we are continuing that into this year. That number's actually much lower because we did spend it down. It just didn't hit it in this fiscal year. So as you know, we made some significant kitchen improvements and purchases with equipment, and we will continue to spend that down. Happy to answer any questions in regard to year-end summary or our current financial status.
Thank you.
Facilities, are you taking that as well today?
Yeah, so our facilities manager did include a maintenance report. That's Peter Mora, and it just reported back on some basic maintenance that we performed this past month. That included a pipe that was cracked underneath the gym area. You may have seen some construction work there. That was repaired. We had a few bad relays. There were a couple walls in the garage that were leaking. That kitchen equipment that I just referenced that was installed in the kitchen, repaired some drains, and then performed the basic inspections.
As far as facility stuff goes, I've now heard nothing more on us finding a space for the super generous gift that the PTO gave us. Do we finally have a spot for where that basketball field and stuff is going to be going?
Yeah, so we had, so I know, I had met with principal, so Jamie Parsons and Brian Belanger, and we had identified an area that would work well as far as the location. I believe Brian went back to the PTO and they were going to work on the exactly what the, because I think there was a question of
I was just told to bring it up for the PTO and just
And then the, so at this point, I think it's in the PTO's hands to come back with Right, with exactly what they're looking to do.
As long as we roll the ball, because that's an awesome gift, and I'm ready to
And I mean, we are, we would enthusiastically encourage that project, and if, I will follow up with Brian to see if he's been in touch with the PTO recently, but I think they were doing work on their end to them come to actually present that proposal to the board, and then the board will have to accept that as a donation, should that come to fruition.
They said they had proposed to put it right behind the school, right in the courtyard.
So we had been talking about kind of adjacent to the court, over near the, where the new pavilion is, that area, is like a grassy area. So partially onto the courtyard and into the grassy area, I believe was
Yeah, I'll talk with Brian, I'll talk with the PTO as well. I guess, as long as we're getting the ball rolling on that, that's such an awesome thing for the school and for the kids, so. That's all I had on facilities.
Thanks, Matt.
School board goals.
Make it through the meeting.
Your goals from last year are in here, and I'm not going to spend much time on them other than to say again, particularly, board adopts goals on an annual basis. So last year, your goal was, "School Board Will Work With Administration and SAU In The Continued Pursuit Of Academic Excellence For All Students In Seabrook Schools By Providing Continued Support For The Articulation Of K-8 Academic Programming, Providing Continued Support For Pre-K-8 Literacy, Providing Continued Support For Tiered Interventions And Extensions For All Students In Seabrook Schools." Goal two is school culture. "The Board Will Work With Administration And The SAU To Promote A Positive And Supportive School Culture At Both Elementary And Middle Levels By Providing Continued Support For Social Emotional Learning For Students That Emphasizes Connection With Peers And Adults Including Trauma And Foreign Teaching And Learning, Providing Continued Support For Behavior Remediation For Students Including Multi-Tiered Systems Of Support, Providing Continued Support For A Positive School Culture That Fosters Teamwork Between Students, Staff, Faculty, And School Board." And your third goal was community connections. "The Board Will Work With Administration And The SAU To Promote Positive Communication Connection With The Larger Seabrook Community By Providing Continued Support For Connection With Local Businesses, Community Organizations, Trade Schools, And Nonprofits, Providing Continued Support For Two-way Communication With Parents Around Academic Programming, Student Supports, And Celebrations Of Learning." So this is a good time of year to be updating those. I know the Joint Board will be taking that portrait of a learner who will act in October, but to the extent that it informs our work and the work of the faculty in our schools, we value that guidance and input from the board.
So let's work on our goals, I guess, this, before next meeting. Submit them all in, create, get rid of anything that we need to add so that they have it, would be my suggestion. Send them in. Sounds good. Awesome.
The policies, second read and adoption. Does anyone have any policies or concerns with the ones that were listed as far as the withdrawal or the ones that were listed to keep? Speak your mind.
Mark Samuel.
Hi. Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion to approve them?
Make a motion to approve the adoption and withdrawals recommended for the 43 policies as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Behavior update.
Yeah, so I'm mindful that we've got about 15 minutes before I have to go to the next board meeting of the evening, but there was a request for information around discipline in terms of what's issued at the school, and the range of consequences doesn't really deviate from what's in the handbook that you presented with in August, but it ranges from multi-day suspensions at the extreme end, out-of-school suspensions to in-school suspensions, to detentions, to lunch detentions, to conferences with a teacher, to conferences with a parent, to time spent in the office, removal from classrooms. What am I missing, Colleen? I mean, it's a pretty wide, wide range. It includes behavior planning, work for the counselor, any and all of the above depending on the individual circumstances. You know, to date, we've had a number of in-school and out-of-school suspensions and detentions, office detentions run Tuesdays and Thursdays. There are two staff members who share those duties each day that there are office detentions. Individual teachers also provide after-school detentions. They provide lunch detentions. They have conferences with students. They have conferences with students and parents. They have conferences with students and counselors. They do individual behavior planning teams, sometimes do teams, sometimes do contracts and behavior plannings with individual students. They have a board-certified behavior analyst who works with us. We have a school counselor. We have a school psychologist who's available to consult. Sometimes students go before the intervention team. Some students have small group intervention in the form of small group meetings with the school counselor or with a psychologist. We have out-of-school counseling resources who come in from community mental health and Seacoast Youth Services who work with us. We also have special education supports where students qualify for those services. So that's kind of the menu, and then, again, it depends on the individual circumstances because our students are all unique. We have a developmental age range from grades five through eight, and we work through the issues depending on what occurs. Colleen, have you noticed anything in your time here that you feel like you're
I think there's a handful of students that are struggling, you know, for a variety of reasons, and I think, you know, Meredith, Mike, and I have had all of them either in our office or talk room. I introduced myself to a few parents and said, you know, "Today was a tough day, and I need you to kind of support the school." I think the teacher, he had a little lot in the classroom on a day-to-day basis, like the superintendent said, the student, yeah, a 10-year-old conversation with a fifth grader was very different than what I had a conversation with two little fifth graders. when I had a conversation with two little, big pretty girls. That looked very different. But at the end of the day, they know that we care about them, we're trying to do what's right for them, and I will, I'm gonna speak from my own experience. I've never seen a school district that has as many rep, prom, support services as you do, so I, I think you're really lucky in that venue. Um, I've never, ever had that in my experience. So, you know, it's good that we're all, we all want the same thing. We want this dynamic to change that, you know, the Seabrook Middle School, I mean, we want people. My, my child goes to Seabrook Middle School and look at, you know, you gave us a history of achievement. I think everybody in this building is trying to change that, and it's tough with the relationship you have with them.
Um, Colleen, could you reference really quick what you, the numbers that you referenced in, from your time in Lowell, when you first started?
I was in Lawrence.
Lawrence, sorry, not Lowell.
What would you like me to put?
Um, your testing numbers, who you had, that what you dealt with in the beginning.
Okay, so when we opened the doors, we were in corrective action, which meant the state was about to take us over. And I was a first-year principal and quite honestly didn't know what I was doing. And I was like, "Okay, this is not good". So they came in three days, they talked to everybody, talked to students, parents, teachers, and basically by the end of that three days, they deemed that we had the supports in place in order to move our school forward. I will say that the teachers in the building led the charge in that. I said, "We can either get taken over by this data or we can change the way we're doing business". So it took us three years to do that. Three, three solid years of really looking at data and supporting children, so it, it absolutely can happen for children, but we, we need the parents to be a part of that as well. And we have them a lot of the day and we have them for lots of the hours that we have them. It's not easy work, it's really hard work. It's absolutely doing. I don't think I can sit here and say that.
Probably, yes.
Can we make a motion to accept all the gifts as listed?
Um, you can. Can I just iterate what they are? So you've got five thousand dollars, um, to be divided among ten teachers for classroom resources, um, from McGovern Subaru, six hundred and eighty-two dollars, um, from McGovern Subaru for classroom supplies for Seabrook Elementary School, seven hundred dollars from the American Legion for classroom supplies, and the PTO donation of ten thousand dollars for field trips pre-K to eight, a thousand dollars for SMS health supplies and equipment, a thousand dollars for music supplies and equipment, and a thousand dollars for grade six ecology school.
I make a motion that we accept all those wonderful gifts.
Very generous gifts.
Second.
Done.
All, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. I'll do it afterwards.
Thank you very much to McGovern and American Legion, and of course, our super generous PTO. The P-card agreement is the next thing.
Thank you. Um, so per your policy, um, the, uh, you, you do allow for the use of a credit card um, for purchasing and procurement. Um, we have, um, up to this point, never utilized a credit card. However, we would like to make that change. Um, it'll certainly help us as far as, um, tracking expenditures and making certain purchases that oftentimes is cumbersome, um, via check. So we are looking to enter into, um, a purchasing card agreement with, uh, the Bank of Montreal. Um, and we do need a approval from you, the board, um, to authorize myself as the, um, business official to enter into that agreement.
Question, is this a, like, interest-bearing credit card, or is this like a debit checking card that allows you to access and spend the money in the side of that school budget?
Yeah, there's no, there's no interest involved, 'cause it's, we, it's, it's paid, you pay it in full. So on, on a monthly basis, so there's no, there's no cost in card.
Just taking away the, actually physically writing up the check.
Right.
As long as it's not in current interest at like a nineteen percent credit card that, that everyone else is using, and we're not paying it off by going minimum, so.
No, per, per the terms of the agreement, we are, we are required.
We'll be swimming in debt by the end of this school year.
Yeah, per the terms of the agreement, we are required to, um, to pay it off on a monthly basis.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to authorize the SAU twenty-one associate superintendent for finance and operations to execute a P-card program agreement on behalf of the Seabrook School Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, so availability for a future board meeting, just for you to discuss the health curriculum, and I guess, overall, curriculum concerns, or?
Whatever you guys want to talk about.
Dave's right. Curriculum situations, focus on health.
How much lead, how much lead, lead time do we need?
What did you?
How much, do we need your availability, is it just a? You get, someone throw a date on, I can tell you.
Right now, we need to start with the board's availability. Okay.
I was just clarifying, we're doing data at the next scheduled school board meeting, right?
Yes.
So we're not, we don't have to deal with that, okay?
Yeah, this would be specific to curriculum, yeah.
I could do. About Tuesday the twenty-fourth.
Tuesday the twenty-ninth.
I could do Thursday the twenty-sixth.
At the same time, when our regular meeting is four-thirty?
On, yeah, unless that would be, unless that would be something that would need to be adjusted, but I would think.
Yeah.
Thursday the twenty-sixth, I would.
Parent teacher conference.
Parent teacher conferences, and I probably have that scheduled on that.
Yeah, but don't they only go till three?
No, three to six.
Oh, that was, oh, that was.
Just kidding.
Okay, scratch that.
October nineteenth?
We also have parent, I have, oh, no, I have one. Uh, yes, I could do that. I could do the nineteenth on Thursday, 'cause my meeting ends at three fifty.
I can't, I won't be here.
Okay.
Wednesday the eighteenth?
I have, we have so.
November.
Tuesday, the seventh, what about the seventeenth?
November second, seventeenth, I'm not available.
Monday, the thirtieth.
Oh, it's trick or treat.
Halloween.
Oh, my God. November sixth.
November.
Joint Board.
We have.
November second, November second.
Joint Board public. We have Southampton and Northampton on November second. November third, now, do we?
The twenty, October, October twen, October twenty-third?
Yes. I could make that work.
Yep.
Yeah.
Which one?
Twenty-third.
October twenty-third. We wanna shoot from four-thirty?
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do you guys don't have regularly scheduled meetings together?
We see.
We did. Extra meeting.
But we're also trying to work in between those two, 'cause we meet, we meet here, and we meet the joint board, and we have committees.
Four-thirty, school board.
We do have it more together than that seems. This is just extra. Like, you have more to handle than what we just talked about. What did you say?
October, October twenty-third and four-thirty, does that work?
And is it health curriculum or curriculum in general?
Let's go with curriculum, but with an emphasis on health.
October what?
Third, twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty. I'm just, does that work? Thirty. The health curriculum is the main concern. So that would be the thing that I would say, people wanna see the specific.
Right, we wanna see that our kids are getting the same classes.
So you want the curriculum adoption process, like? I'll figure it out. I'll come with a.
I trust that you will come.
All right.
We will figure it out, but I think if there are specific concerns or questions the board has, it's helpful for us to have that information in advance, so that we're planning accordingly.
We will send you guys emails with, uh, like what we're looking at, together, uh.
All right, so Monday the twenty-third at four-thirty PM, it will be a public meeting. Everyone is welcome to attend. And that, that's what we will do. Okay, personnel, we will discuss a non-public. Uh, the future meetings, just so everyone is aware, we have an operations committee meeting tomorrow. I will be there. The delegate assembly is this Saturday. Are you two days going?
Kelly's.
Kelly's going, okay. And then the joint board, our next joint board meeting is October twenty-fifth. The joint board public hearing and meeting is November sixth. The, our next scheduled school board meeting for Seabrook is November fourteenth. Also at four-thirty and also here in the library. So we're gonna do a, we're gonna take a motion to do a roll call. I'll make a motion for a roll call to enter non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three-two A B C at six fourteen PM.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
But we're making a motion for.